Motion?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any reports from any of the boards or committees of town? No? We have no citizens' concerns on the agenda, we have no public hearings, and no town administrator's report tonight, so we can get rea-- oh. New, old business, appointments, C-list. All right. Planning board rep to the conservation committee, John O'Connell, one term. Do you want to read them all, and if any got a question, we'll hold and go back to it?
Yep.
Okay. Planning board rep to the ZBA, Linda McCamick, one year. Alternate commissioner to the MVPC, Martha Taylor, one year. Cultural council, Pamela Jacobson, Joanne Johnson, Christopher Drellik, Kathy Muse, Amy Swanarsky, and Michael Update Dyke.
Oh, pretty good, Joe.
What?
Counselor, agent, director, Marty Joe.
Council on Aging Board of Directors, Luanne Kuta, Russ Pierce, Jerry Dour, Gene Doyle, Joanne Hogan, Alba Goldthorpe, Evelyn Neuse, Joyce Machiras, and Eugene Smith. They're all one-year terms. Rec committee, Rich Capalupo, Diane Manta, Warren Manta, Rebecca Tekejian, Dave Taylor, Bill Wint. We also have the Public Safety Committee. Just looking at the citing of a new Public Safety Bill. John Lucy Jr., Martha Taylor, Robert Serino, Tracy Blase, and Sam Joslin. All right. No holds?
No holds.
Any--
I move we approve.
I'll make a motion, we appoint him as presented.
Okay. Second it. Any other, no comments or anything like that? All right. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Request from the Plum Island Beach coma to have music 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on July 5th to celebrate their second anniversary. Okay.
Does he have to fill out an application?
What?
Does he need an application?
Do we have an application for that? No, we don't. I thought we did.
I thought we did, too.
We don't have one yet?
That's due, I didn't give it to them.
Okay, all right.
It's been a lot of those weeks.
All right. Were the questions--
He's here.
He's here. So, anyway, Greg, just tell us what you're going to do, briefly? If you could do it, do it to the mic, please. Otherwise, the people in Plum Island can't hear it.
I just want to have a little celebration for our second year open, July 5th on Friday, from 4:00 to 9:00. Just looking to have some music.
Okay. Motion?
Okay, is 4:00 to 9:00 enough? Because it says "or so" on here.
Well, it depends on if the, I can't say if the band's going to be late or early, you know, so it's kind of like that.
Well, give us a maximum time.
As far as-- 9:30.
9:30.
9:30.
Is there anything that would be missed, Kathy?
No.
All right. I make a motion, we accept.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions, Mike?
Nope.
I'll set. Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Fuel Training. Proposal for half marathon on May 19th, 2014.
Wow. They did one in May.
Oh, it's June 1st of 2014.
June 1st of 2014.
Okay.
We did one this year in May, it was ahead of the--
Okay. Now, all right, motion first?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All right. Now, anyone got any questions on it? Take a look at it and-- Mason, why don't you step up and tell us what you're going to do, that'd be easier.
I'm Jeanie Carter from Fuel Training Studio of Newburyport. And we did the half marathon this past May, and it came through town a little bit, and it seemed like it went well. And we've gotten permission from the deputy chief, Lucy, and Rick Samasco, they looked over everything and felt that it looked good. And we did change the day to a little later day because it conflicted with a fundraiser that we didn't want to conflict with this year. We didn't authorize it last year.
Any questions right there?
Nope.
All right. And you're working with, you said, deputy chief Lucy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, and anything that he wants you--
He's got a letter in here.
Absolutely.
Okay, no, but this is next year, you know?
Okay.
Anything, just so that he's up to date on it.
Yep.
All right. All in, any other questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Preservation restriction for 85 High Road, the Perkins property. It's a correction?
It's a correction, yeah. They have the wrong, incorrect law, but the preservation restriction should be law more instead of law two.
Okay.
So, when we did that so many years ago, the preservation restriction was on the house close to the road?
Yeah, it's on the house.
Okay. And for some reason, it got put down in the back? Okay. And that's all it is?
And that's all it is.
Motion?
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? Martha explained it. All in favor?
All right.
All in favor?
Hi.
Signatures on the updated deed for land sale on Hutchins Road. Have we already done that?
No.
Okay.
You approved the sale.
Okay.
Approved the bidding, approved the sale, and this is the-- We're looking at what, Hutchins Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an updated deed for the sale.
All right. Okay, motion?
It's the one that the trustee could change.
Okay.
They had died, he was the trustee.
So, is this the one that I kind of came in and signed? No, yes?
Yes. I think you and Joe both signed it.
Uh, Chuck, I think.
And Chuck did sign it today.
So, just to fill it out.
We just need Mike and David to sign it.
So, we already approved it, so we don't have to vote on it?
Okay. All right. So, you sign that sometime before you leave tonight, okay? Okay, we continue, we're going to continue to 7:09. The signatures for the--
Purchase and sale.
Purchase and sale for the--
Preservation.
Yellow school.
Yep.
Okay. Elizabeth Holland of Medicinal Evolution, proposal to establish a medical marijuana facility in town.
Hi. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Holland, and I'm a lifelong resident of Essex County. This is my nephew, Brandon Terracone, who's also a lifelong member of Essex County and just got married and is having a baby and actually looking for homes up in this area. So, we are in business together, in addition to our day jobs, to apply for a license for medicinal marijuana dispensary with the state. And if I may--
Yep.
I have a brochure for each of you. We plan to meet with the town administrator, the planning board, and the-- please chief upon the administrative return from vacation on July 8th. But just to tell you a little bit about us, what this, as it says, is my nephew, so we're a family, and we are doing this because we believe very strongly in the benefits of medical marijuana. And my background is more in business. I've recently been in biotech for a number of years. I'm a co-pandora of a biotech company that does sequencing in, based in Woburn. So, this is separate from that, but I have a number of years of experience. Brandon is a musician and business entrepreneur, real estate developer, entrepreneur, has given a lot back to the community, as New Orleans was his second home for a while. And, and he gave back quite a bit after Katrina for, because of the devastation of Katrina. So, anyway, Brandon, can you give a little bit of information about why we're talking to, we're looking, we're talking to all of the towns in Essex County about our plans because we know that 69% of the residents of your community voted towards this question. So, and we want to speak with everyone whether or not we have a location in your town, but there is a location that we have looked at that we think would be appropriate for your town, and that's why we're here today. So, two reasons, just to introduce ourselves, and so that we know about that. And Brandon can speak a little about the facility itself that we just came back.
Yep. First of all, thank you for having us here. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you. We understand that this is a sensitive issue on both sides of the coin. You know, many people who support it still have a mentality of, well, patients should have the right, but not in my backyard type of thing. And, you know, we've, we've been working with a lot of patients who are extreme cases, quadriplegic, MS patients, cancer patients, people who need safe access to the medicine. Initially, we were thinking Newburyport was going to be our location. We've met with Mayor Holliday, we've looked at some commercial spaces up there. But when I saw the 95 North Center over at the Byfield exit, where there's the You Store It, and there's the fertility clinic, there's already a medical building there, I met with Brandon Kelly, and Austin Spanella has been the agent showing me locations. And we presented it to Brandon Kelly, and he felt like it was an appropriate use for the space over there. It's really centrally located for much of Essex County, where it is on 95, the accessibility for commuters and for all the surrounding towns. And we also feel like it's removed from neighborhoods, it's removed from downtowns, it's removed from schools. It's, it really stands in a separate but secure location at that building, the way it is over there. And just to give you an idea of the type of facility we're talking about, we're not talking about doing any cultivation there at all. We're talking with Georgetown, we're trying to buy a warehouse there for that, and we're working with Georgetown right now for the cultivation, which would only be two exits away, where our, the regulations are extremely strict. So, we're following everything that the Department of Public Health has put out. We've been meeting with them for the last four months. We've been to every hearing they've had, we've been involved since the beginning. And we plan on doing our cultivation in Georgetown and transporting to, if we were to use the Byfield location, to that facility, where we would have a security guard on duty, we would basically have casino-style, you know, security, very, very secure, no loitering around, we would see patients only, there would be no other commerce done there for casual sales of items. It would be only people with cards that are patients registered at our location who would be allowed to enter. And we would have a counselor there to work with people to make sure that we're not promoting drug addiction, and that we're only supplying high-quality cannabinoids for medical reasons to patient base. And, you know, we've watched what's gone on in a lot of different towns, we've met with 10 towns already up, up here in Essex County, and there's more on our list. And we're trying to hear from people, we want to hear the concerns, we, we would love to be considered for that location because we feel like it, it could be great there. It's a, it's a, that location really has some specific things that a lot of other locations we've looked at don't have. And we hope that, you know, this town might welcome the business, and we'd like, love to hear from you guys. And we're going to meet with the, the town manager and the--
Town administrator. Chief-- Chief and planning board--
Next week, two weeks.
Two weeks after vacation, yeah.
Questions?
So, no, you don't normally ask questions, that's fine, but we are certainly, you know, happy to answer any if you have--
Well, I have, I have a whole mess of questions. They kind of come in two groups, and I'll start with just the technical aspects of getting a license or whatever you're going to call it. I understand there's only going to be 35 given out in Massachusetts, so, and I guess they haven't even announced, or have they now? Last I heard, they hadn't even announced when the application process would begin.
They, they haven't, so we have the regulations, and by the way, I will, they're lengthy, but I will email them all to you tomorrow in case you wanted to look at them in a PDF form. But the application process has not been announced, we believe it to be the end of August or early September. But in the beginning phase of the application, you have to determine where you're, you don't have to have a lease, you have to determine where your location is, have local support, have a landlord that says, yes, that's fine, or you own a building, or those kinds of things. And so, as Brandon said, we have been working since the very beginning, the regulations are lengthy. I've gone through a lot of regulatory issues in my career in biotech, which will hopefully make me uniquely qualified to be able to, to deal with the Department of Public Health on this.
Yeah, the regs are only like 53 pages.
Yes, we have read, well, Brandon has read more reading than I have, I have to admit, but when I've done a lot of regulatory--
And as I understand, it's a two-phase process, right? So, the first phase is just determining eligibility, but it sounds like--
Yes.
You're saying all the right stuff, so I know you've been doing your homework.
Yes, with an astro web and half million--
Right. And then I guess, so then phase two is when they decide who the 35 are going to be.
Yes.
Do you have a sense, is this going to be rather competitive? Because my second line of questioning is, what's the business model here?
So, we, we believe, we don't know if they're going to do 35 licenses yet. They, they may award up to 35 licenses. Some licenses may come out, it may take longer for them--
But think of the minimum of one per county, right?
Yeah. Minimum of one per county. I believe that based on population and what we've been hearing from Cheryl Bartlett and the other people at the Department of Public Health, is that it's going to be based on the population, so Essex County might get two or three. We, we think that the, there's going to definitely be some competition through Essex County, but we also have found that a lot of the towns we're meeting with, the competitors that we meet have not been meeting with the towns. And to us, it's important to make this work for everyone. We understand it's such a new industry, and we want to make sure that patients have safe access to quality products, but it's not compromising to the community. So, we're hoping that we can meet with towns to meet the needs of the town, and at the same time, be able to meet the needs of the patient, and because of that, be awarded a license.
Because I'm also wondering, what's, what's the business model here? Because you're supposed to be nonprofit, sort of supporting patients.
Well--
You're talking about $50,000 a year just for the annual fee and stuff like that.
It's not for the faint of heart. Yeah. It's definitely for the entrepreneur, which we've both been or are entrepreneurs, so it's a risk, it's a risk. We've already put a lot of money and sweat equity into this endeavor as our night job, as a, as a weekend, as I mentioned. So, I think the business model, and, and we actually have a further business plan, if you're interested, I'd be happy to email to you with a little bit more of our philosophy, but we want to start small. We think that if we raise a million dollars, we can open a small facility that's going to, you know, grow as acceptance grows and as doctors become more educated and things like that. We are probably not going to make money the first couple of years, but we can get paid salary. So, if Brandon is the, you know, head of the 180E Corporation, which is a nonprofit, he can make a reasonable salary based upon what typical wages would be for a manager of such a location. Me, with a human resources background, have, has information on, on that. So, we, you know, we probably, we think we'll probably break even at cash flow, I think at the beginning of the second year. Yeah. So, but obviously, that depends on a lot of variables because, because it's such a new business, we don't know what the insurance costs are going to be, not everyone wants to, you know, to work with us, and then other businesses are realizing that this is happening, it's happening in more than 50%, 50% of the--
Country now.
Country now has access to some type of medicinal cannabis. So, our business model is to hope to make money at some point in time, but to give back because we believe in the mission and the vision. But, yeah, we, of course, we aren't doing it to become a charity. We want to be successful.
And we, we, we are a nonprofit, and we do plan to incorporate in giving back to the community within our business model. Because we're a nonprofit, a percentage of our revenue will be going back to other nonprofits in the community that we're in. So, we'll establish a fund of a percentage after we break even to where other nonprofits can come to us and apply to be able to receive, you know, our, our positive cash flow into their nonprofit. But we've got to get there first.
Now, does your direct regulat, like regulatory, would that be the Mass, would it be the Department of Health, Massachusetts Department of Health?
Department of Health, yeah.
Now, are they going to actually change how they do business? Are they putting special people out to monitor? How are they going to do it?
Yeah, they've created a whole department to deal with this now. It's just been a, a big deal for them to have to, to come up with the, the funding and the, and the new jobs to be able to do this. But they will be putting into effect a full regulatory scheme, which will include ID cards for patients that will be able to scan in our system and make sure that everyone is legally allowed to be in our facility. Doctors will have access to that database, police officers will have access to that database, and anyone that's in and out of our doors will be recorded through that database.
I think, I think kind of, is this moves forward for you guys anyway, at least for a guy like myself? I mean, David had some good questions. My questions would probably fall onto that side.
Right. The regulatory press, so it's a break-even financial decision by the state. So, us as taxpayers, all of us as taxpayers in Massachusetts, won't, won't have to pay any tax for this bill. That's why the fees are so high to the, for the dispensaries. So, and so that's the why the DPH can create the department, because they're going to be collecting fees. And they're also going to allow--
Now, fees from?
From us. From the dispensaries. There's non-refundable application fees of 50, 50,000?
30,000 for the application fee, 50 a year for the licensees.
Once you get it, so.
Is Obamacare going to pay for medical--
No. No, cash business only, which, to be honest with you, my biotech company sells genetic, some genetic testing, and we get paid by insurance companies, and they don't pay very well. So, actually, I think cash business at this point is a good thing. But, you know, we'll obviously have an accountant, it will be run just like any other business, but the federal government doesn't recognize it as a, as a valid, you know, business plan right now.
We think that in the first year, we'll probably reach about 300 patients if we're servicing this area. About 3% of your population, you know, the Essex County population will qualify, probably about 1% now are starting to get their certificates. And we, we have contacted a lot of these patients because we're involved in this, in this world. And, you know, we, we certainly ask you to think about it from a compassionate angle if someone in your family's had cancer or MS, or has serious pain, quadriplegic. We need these patients, and, and these are the people that we're going to be servicing. And to think about denying them a natural medicine as opposed to the 35 pharmaceutical painkillers that they're on, if they choose so to do it in a natural way, is just unfair. And, and they, they, they need, and it's, it's clear that the voters feel the same way because we voted for it in the state, but they need to have safe access. Having to go to the street in the black market to buy poor-quality products grown in Mexico or Canada and sprayed with chemicals or whatever is what they're having to do now. And the fact that Massachusetts is embracing this and putting out 35 licenses and making sure it's regulated right, I think that we're going to see that Massachusetts really sets up the first properly-run medical marijuana system in the country.
Now, one other stupid question. The dichotomy between federal not accepting this and stateside, state-level acceptance, how does that work? I mean, can you wake up and have federal guys at your door?
You, you potentially could. You know, the current administration has said that they're not going to waste their money on something, their time and money on something that, that 51% of a population is now living in states where they have medical marijuana legal. We're starting very conservatively and plan on staying that way until our patient base demands us going larger. There's facilities on the West Coast that are 20 times, 30 times, 40 times larger than we'll ever be. So, we're not as worried about the federal involvement, especially because, again, Massachusetts has rolled out such tight regulations that it's very hard for the federal government to justify coming into a Massachusetts dispensary that is so well-regulated, testing their products, making sure their workers are getting treated properly, making sure that, that the medicine's not hanging, ending up in the wrong hands, that it, it would be hard for them to justify coming after someone like us.
I think, you know, myself, I don't have any questions specifically, but I think, like you said, you emailed over the information that you bet to our town administrator.
Sure.
And then I'd like her to run it through our town council.
Yes.
And see where we stand there.
And that, I think that that's hap, we're meeting with the town council as well.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, at the same, we don't have an actual date yet, but we're working on that with her, I know she's away.
To participate in your, in your program, to get, to be able to use this, does it require a doctor's prescription?
Absolutely. It's not a prescription because it's not through pharmacies, so they're calling it a certificate. It's, you know, it's just the language that they use. But, yeah, doctor writes a certificate, doctors are already writing certificates all over Massachusetts for, for patients. That, that certificate then gets registered with the Department of Public Health, the patient then gets issued a card, and that patient still needs to get checked up on every year and has to continue a relationship with that doctor.
Has to be a bona fide relationship.
And the doctors are actually going to have to start taking classes to be able to prescribe cannabinoids. So, it's, they really, it's the tightest regulations. I mean, it's, it's, a lot of doctors look at this and go, hey, I write morphine and oxycontin without any of this, this red tape, but, but now I'm writing, you know, an organic plant matter, and I'm, I'm having to take classes on it. But the reality of it is, is this is what is going to make it work in our community. And, you know, we come to you today knowing that it's, that it's a sensitive issue, but feeling that, that our specific location is appropriate for this. You know, I wouldn't come and say, let's put this right downtown, or what it comes
And you're asking for that specific location?
That is what we're here to talk about. We're not here to say, oh, now we're going to put it in a different location. We really feel that that is a spot that can work. I've talked to the landlord, we, we've been dealing with Georgetown for the cultivation ends, and we feel like it could be a good, a good match.
Okay, just, you know--
I've got, one other thing is, we're already getting feedback from some of our residents saying they're opposed to it.
Yeah.
Most cases, in one, only in one case is there a specific reason, and it's property values, and I'm sure you've heard that one before. But, again, as I understand the way the rules are being set up, we probably can't ban it, but we could, through zoning, say it could be in certain areas and not other areas. And also, as I understand it, we have the ability to just put in a moratorium, who say, we've got to get up to speed on this, we could have just put in a moratorium and say, I don't know how long that moratorium can last.
The more, well, Mark Kopey said that in years we have to move max. A lot of the towns have been, you know, because they have to vote for them at town meeting, a lot of towns we've found have been voting against the moratoriums. There was just another article I read today from Air Massachusetts where they, 75% of the, the vote was in favor of not allowing the moratorium. And we agree with the zoning thing. I think that's why we specifically come with a suggested location that we, we would hope no one would find that it's going to drive their value down of their property because-- hope no one would find that it's gonna drive their value down of their property because there's a legitimately-run treatment center at the, you know, ninety-five North location where there's already a pregnancy clinic, and there's already a used store, and it's a, it's a commercial-style building where we feel like it's it's an appropriate use of the of the space.
Right, I mean, the other thing I've heard, you know, is increased crime, but it sounds like, you know, you're really going the whole nine yards in terms of security and all that stuff.
Well, we will, I mean, we have to get security for our security.
Yeah.
That's, we in the regulation.
Two security companies.
Two security companies, one watching, the other one watching us. So not only do we want security for ourselves, for our product, for our patients, and privacy as well, because not everyone that maybe suffers from one of these diseases wants their next-door neighbor to know it, so we're not gonna put it on a main street. You know, we, and, but yeah, security for the security, so.
The the increased crime thing, I have yet to see real statistics on. And really, I think that you find that in like Denver, where there's a thousand dispensaries now, a lot of those dispensaries ended up in really rough neighborhoods, and they actually brought higher security into those really rough neighborhoods. And a lot of the dispensaries out there will claim that they have now decreased crime because these were abandoned blocks where people were doing whatever they wanted, and now they're they're occupied by businesses. You know, we wanna bring local jobs here. This is not gonna be tied-to-hippy-head shop-style business. This is gonna be, you know, come in, sit on, sit on a nice leather couch after you get accepted in through your car, and you wait for your time to go up to the private area where we're meeting with our clients to see what what products they need. They fill out when they're there for the first time, the information for, so we know what type of products they're looking for, what disease they're dealing with, whether they want our counselor to talk to their doctor about what might be the best thing to to offer them, and to really be patient-based. And when I say we might see three or three hundred or four hundred patients by the end of our first year, that's it. That's no, there's no other people hanging around, there's no random traffic. We're not a, we're a destination shopping trip. We're not a, oh, I just drove by the dispensary, why don't I just stop and pick up some pot on the way home type of trip. It's like, no, I'm, you know, I need my humps a month, you know, I'm a cancer patient, I go through this much a day, I'm using vaporizer, I need to be able to go get my vaporizer, I need to be able to go get my plant material, and I do that first Monday of every month or whatever schedule one might do for a pharmaceutical company.
And if you ever wanted us to speak to your town, I mean, we we really are willing to like do that. Like, we believe in this very passionately, and again, like, it's not for the faint of heart. I mean, we're, again, invested our own time and money into this, and we'll continue to do that, and and are gonna, you know, hope to get some investors too, to raise that half million escrow and a half million more. We probably need to get this started, but we we're doing something we really feel passionate about, and I'm happy to talk to anybody.
David, when you alluded to, is MGL 180, is that enabling legislation? Got any, you know, teeth to it? Like the solar panel, you know, bylaws?
But that's a nonprofit corporation.
That's a nonprofit corporation. The type of corporation has to be.
Any nonprofit corporation.
Any nonprofit state, not federal.
If you incorporate in Massachusetts.
Right. So we have established a 180E nonprofit corporation.
Yeah, but the Department of Health has established a whole website. I guess, it must have been bombarded with questions, so.
Yeah, and we'll share that with you.
Yeah.
Just ask. We're here to educate. We understand that the initial thought that goes in everyone's mind is worry about this, worry about that. It's like, the state has already addressed this, just most people aren't aware of it.
Right.
And we're there, we're here now, trying to educate you and trying to pass it on to the town where whoever wants to know about what we're trying to do. And the reality of it is, is, you know, the the patients, the the state has voted that patients have the right to this medicine. The DPH has said that every county is going to get at least one, if not multiple, and they're gonna be here anyway. I mean, if there's, if we don't get it at the ninety-five center, someone else is gonna have one in Newburyport for sure, or someone else is gonna have one in Ames area or wherever. And and we feel like with our location there, we can really cover a lot of those, the needs of those towns, and still be able to to keep it so that it's not compromising everyone's worries and, you know, the communities here. And we'd like to, we'd really like to see this happen in such a smooth way that after two years, everyone who's worried about it says to themselves, wow, this really was no reason to worry about the way this business was set up.
And you get get to collect real estate, collect real estate tax on the building that you have.
We already have.
They already are.
Well.
Georgetown will get it when we buy the, uh.
You can, you can charge us, you can charge us a lot of fees, but I'm not encouraging that.
Are they, are they gonna consume the product on-site?
No, absolutely not.
Are they taking home?
Absolutely not. No lawyer, and no consumption on-site.
No.
Our clients, to be honest with you, the clients that I believe we're gonna have most of are people in their fifties and sixties and seventies with debilitating diseases that wanna be able to do this privately in their home, you know? The the street market is still out there, and people who buy from that street market, kids and all that, you know, they're not gonna stop going there. They're not gonna all of a sudden be able to come to our facility because they're not gonna have their cards, and they're not gonna be certified unless they have a doctor, you know, a bona fide relationship with a doctor. So the worry of like, oh, there's gonna be like, you know, a head shop where everyone's hanging out and and smoking herb all day is just not, it's just not what the reality of this of the situation's gonna be. It's gonna be an extremely tightly clean business plan, and and we think that, we think that we can present that and do it right. We've met other people that are trying to get into this business that we don't think are gonna do it right. But we think that, you know, we're local, and we've we've met a lot of people from California and Colorado and all these places trying to come in and take over the market here. And we think that it, there's a place for for locals to bring local jobs and to make this work within our community because we're part of the community. And we, you know, we wanna hear from everyone with their worries, and we wanna work through those.
All right, so your next step will be town administrator?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
We'll send you all copies of the regs if you-
Regulations, yeah.
Yeah, that's important.
A little bit more detail about our business plan. You know, if you'd like to see, that sounded like there was some interest in understanding a little bit about the business plan, I'm happy to send that to you too. This is more of a general brochure, but we have more of a financial sort of investor slash business plan if you want to invest.
And I think, too, you know, in terms of just dealing with, you know, our local residents, you know, hearing about the kind of security you wanna put in and so forth, you know, I really wanna thank you for answering all our questions. And it's it's pretty obvious you guys are really doing your homework right now.
Thank you.
One of the things that it would be like, if, let's say we were to start getting a green light on that location, then I could lay out very specific for that location plans where people could see where the door was, see where our waiting room was, see where our security guard would be, where, who our security system is gonna be run with. We actually have to have two security companies that work for us, there needs to be a backup security, and, you know, be able to put people's minds at ease for some of those things.
Because if we do nothing, and Martha can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you'd basically be classified as a standard retail business, that location, that's an allowed use, and so if we do nothing, you know, your folks are already set to go. So it's only if the community chooses to do something that it would make a, really a difference for your plans.
But we want your support. We want the community's support.
We, we, yeah, we could have gone and tried to do this behind the scenes, but we don't think that's the right way to do this. The last thing we want is to get halfway into a major business plan like this, it's already risky enough, and then be met with all of this, you know, opposition. We'd really like to to say that we've, or we're we're going to say, whatever with, whatever community we work with, that we've gone to the community, we're talking to them, we're hearing from them, and we're trying to address concerns to the best of our ability.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. And our information, I will email you, but our information emails are on the very back of that, so if you ever wanna speak to us further, feel free to.
Please reach out anytime.
Okay.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah. All right.
After we, we talked last week about the efforts of a couple of homeowners from Plum Island and the fact that Pacific Legal Foundation helped them, and they are standing ready to help anyone else that needs assistance and representation, and I thought it'd be nice to send them a thank you. They came to town, helped some residents, and didn't charge anything for it, so. And I've come up with this, I had some help, obviously, I didn't do it.
You really did a good job, John.
Yeah, no, I'm not taking credit for it, believe me. Okay, what this is, is from the town, it's an official proclamation, and I did some research, and it'll all come out in here, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town in Newbury. Whereas, at the request of concern residents of Plum Island, Pacific Legal Foundation submitted a legal opinion on behalf of the property owners whose homes have recently been destroyed, urging the Secretary of Environmental Affairs to respect the right of coastal landowners to enjoy and protect their properties. And whereas, the Board of Trustees will visit with the homeowners who have shown such resilience and to view the rebuilding efforts to date. And whereas the Pacific Legal Foundation's ongoing commitment to stand with the property owners as the important work of recovery continues, and whereas the Pacific Legal Foundation is the oldest and most successful public interest legal organization in the United States that fights for property rights, individual rights, and a balanced approach to the, to environmental protection. Now therefore, we, the Newbury Board of Selectmen, offer our congratulations to Pacific Legal Foundation on the celebration of their fortieth anniversary of its foundings in nineteen seventy-three. I don't know, any comments on it?
Nope.
But it's pretty basic.
Another question, do we have any precedent for doing this?
What?
Do we have any precedent for doing this?
No, we're sending it right now.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
No, no, I mean, we, in the past, we've sent things thanking people for, you know, individuals usually, and that's all.
I just better get a better copy of the seal.
Yeah, well.
But, yeah, no, I'm not, we haven't had too many official proclamations.
Now, the other thing that I'd like to mention, just, it doesn't really have a lot to do with this, but it's quite interesting because the attorney that wrote the letter to the DEP arguing their decision on Harry Trout's property, yes, today, got word that he had argued a case before the Supreme Court representing someone against the state of Florida, and he got word today that he prevailed in his argument. So it's, you know, kind of interesting that today he prevailed in a thing on the, at the Supreme Court, and he was the one that helped us at Plum Island, so, interesting.
I think, I think it's, we're lucky that, you know, through some relationships, we have the ability to access, you know, you know, and have help from some, you know, an operation like the Pacific Legal Foundation. I I really don't have any problems with recognizing their support as, you know, as town fathers like Bruce Todd or anyone else, if, you know, he does a proclamation, recognizes certain people, certain organizations that have, you know, stepped forward to to provide, you know, help at a critical time.
Okay.
So.
I feel the same way he does.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think it's good.
Motion?
I make a motion that we allow you to sign and present this to the.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, David? David, no comment, okay. Okay, so, we'll do this.
Do we actually vote, I don't know?
Well.
I'll say aye here.
Okay, all right. So that's good. The other thing is, I was, well, it was kind of associated with this. I was at a meeting this morning, and there's a group of people from Plum Island that are trying to open a dialogue with the DEP to try and move forward with some of the efforts that have been made down there, find solutions to the problems we've got there, and it's, it looks like we're getting close to having a more open dialogue and more transparency. The, we're pushing for the DEP to start attending the MRBA meetings and come and talk to the public, and which will be, that's a good thing.
So that was my question. One of the groups of people were not, were they tied with the MRBA? So they're gonna be able to bring that to the MRBA?
That's what they're trying to do, yeah.
See, that makes sense. I I sometimes worry a little bit that, you know, as long as everyone stays cooperating and keeps their eyes on the goal for Plum Island, I think it's important, so.
Has, has anyone here, I'm just curious, because I haven't been down to see the post-work on the beach where they rebuilt the dunes and put the rocks in?
I have.
What?
I have.
Recently? I'm just wondering the condition of it.
Well, it looked all right to me. It looked really nice.
Okay. So anyway, like I say, I-
In fact, I was on, yeah, well, last weekend.
Yeah, okay, I was thinking to take a walk down, but it's really, I'm not about to walk that two or three miles down to the beach, you know, so.
Did you walk it, Mike?
Didn't walk it. I drove out on the, on the end, and I looked down, down the side, and then I went into my father's house and wa- and walked out that way, so.
You been down, Dave?
No. We oughta get there, out there soon before the green heads hit.
Yeah, you know, tomorrow. People are getting bit today.
I wanted to see if if any sand had come in from that.
Yeah.
And it looks like there has. It doesn't look like it's, uh.
Well, we should, we should-
It hasn't gone, it hasn't eroded anymore. Looks like there's some some buildup there.
You know, maybe an opportunity would be if the police, like, we don't have lifeguards, but they do patrol with the Argo once in a while, and that might be an opportunity to take a trip down there, so, you know, I think, that sound like a reasonable approach?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we help you?
Hi, possible info, is there voting here?
In the fire station.
Fire station.
Next door, that's good.
Thank you.
We've got fifteen minutes.
Hurry up, all right. All right, so anyway, like I say, if someone's interested, we can find out when they're down there and take a look at the dunes.
Sounds good.
Okay? Makes sense?
Yeah.
I also discovered that, I don't know if you're familiar with the Landsat satellite thing that's been up there?
Say it again.
Landsat, it's a satellite system that's been up there for, I think, forty-five years now or something, and, you know, low Earth orbits, they're photographing the entire planet like multiple times a day.
Yeah.
Apparently, they've posted all that imagery on the web. I just learned about it this afternoon.
Sequentially, or just?
Supposedly, you can pick a region of the Earth and see all the photographs in their collection. I just learned about it this afternoon, but that could be, I don't know what the resolution of the photography is, but that could be useful to sort of get a sense of, you know, because it's almost like an ebb and flow of sand out there.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, we have these snapshots that we take individually, we have a little bit of aerial photography, but if the resolution is good enough, it could be really informative to help us understand, or at least maybe not understand the causes, but actually see how things have been changing out there.
As far as the photography goes, right now, Ross Westcott through Pitta is going up about once a week, and Doug has thousands of photographs. And what they're trying to do, and the volume of photographs is making it difficult, because digital photography, you just click, click, click. And what they're trying to do is put them together, like you said, sequential and based on time. They base it on historic data, if there's been a storm and all that, so, but, you know, this is all stuff that we never had in the past, Dave, you're right.
Yeah. But I think the big difference is that, I mean, I know, because I do some of this for a living, organizing that kind of stuff is really hard, and there's now standard tools to do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe they can figure out a way of sort of tapping into this expertise that's being developed for these.
Now, are they doing it, you know, by satellites so that you really could, you know, if there's some south to north during the summer and fall and spring or whatever, and then, you know, is it gonna be all year long, so if there's a big storm?
This is, as I said, the number of images that are involved in this, it's the entire planet, like, every day for years. So, you know, I cannot, I agree, I can't organize my own photos from my own digital camera. camera.
Will you sit down and take care of that, then, for us?
But apparently, there's some viewer, as I said, I haven't looked at it, because I just found out about it this afternoon, where you can go in and, it's, it's almost a Google Earth kind of a thing, I guess, where you can, that, it could be helpful in helping us sort of document what's happened.
It's all data, yeah. All right. Moving right on.
Transfers?
In accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-three B of National Law, Approval of Intimate Departmental Transfers, I believe.
We've got a bunch of them on the back.
Got them where?
On the back of your thing.
There's like three in a row.
They're in their pile.
That was one, right after your...
Okay, next thing, it's in order, okay. All right, I was thinking, we said a bunch that...
How would we function if we didn't keep?
Oh, I see, that's, that's why. Are these ones that we looked at before and then went to the Finance Committee?
No, these are, these are three more.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So, these are, are we signing them in our thing, or you've got some in the past?
No. She's got the original. All right, request is hereby made for the following transfer. This one here is amount requested, two thousand dollars, to be transferred from building inspector wages and salaries and wages, which has a present balance of ten thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and three cents, to be transferred to the building inspector expenses, which appropriation has a present balance of zero dollars and zero cents, so thus the need. All right, motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Yep.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one. Amount requested, three thousand dollars, to be transferred from Electrical Systems...
It's five thousand, true.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, Jesus. To be transferred from Electrical Systems, one, one zero zero, one ninety-two, sixty-two hundred...
I don't think that's right. Tracy did that.
That doesn't make sense.
I didn't even look at it. I don't know what...
It's probably some number in the internal accounting system.
You know, that's their account number.
Yeah, that's an account number, yeah.
One hundred, one ninety-two, sixty-two hundred.
Yeah, okay, anyway, to be transferred from aforementioned account number.
I get it.
Okay? Which has a balance of five thousand, two hundred, forty-six dollars and forty-one cents, to be transferred to Public Building Utilities, which has a present balance of two hundred and seven dollars and eight cents. So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's another one. Five thousand dollars to be transferred from the Board of Health Expense Account, which appropriation has a present balance of a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, to be transferred to Street Lighting, which has a present balance of seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Excuse me, and I would like to point out that one thing that jumps out of this is this, an account having a present balance of a hundred and six thousand dollars.
We don't see that very often.
And what it's from is, that comes from the Board of Health, and that was money that used to be useful around the transfer station, okay, so. All right, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Just see if you're awake.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's it?
No, there's a bunch of stuff here.
Second page.
That's it.
That's all I've got. Can I go into?
Yep, eighty-one.
No, but we're only three transfers.
Three transfers, okay.
Yep.
All right. Now, what this is, is an agreement regarding the water sewer access at eighty-one Old Point Road.
Right.
Do you know anything about it, Martha? Okay.
I do.
Okay.
I read it.
Okay.
It's, what they're doing is, you're agreeing that you won't put anything, you won't, you're not gonna ever put a water and sewer hookup on anyone Old Point Road, and by doing that, it's, it's gonna allow you to put a water and sewer hookup on Temple Boulevard.
Okay. All right, motion?
I make a move that we do it.
Second. Mike? Second?
Second.
Okay.
It's right in your package.
Discussion, okay.
I read this, but too quickly, probably to really understand it. So, one, the Old Point Road is the undeveloped lot, a three point, four acres?
Yeah, I think that's, isn't that Mash or something like that?
It's the lot that, I think, we didn't even get the office for it one time. Eighty-one, right?
Yeah. All right, so, the, that's an undeveloped lot.
Right.
Never would be able.
I believe so.
Right, right, so.
It's not, I don't wanna say that it would never be able to, but we feel it's highly unlikely, and then, once we take the water sewer hookup away from it, then it is undevelopable. Is that, I see it?
Okay, but, I mean, I'm a little lost as to, I guess it's, this undeveloped lot, Martha, on eighty-one Old Point, had the sewer connection, and we wanna be able to move that sewer connection to Temple Boulevard?
My understanding is they're a finite number, so...
That was my question, why the hell do we have to go through this?
So, this would be transferred to, through Temple Boulevard?
Because of the fact that within the reports, water and sewer master plan, there's only so many hookups allowed, or?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, based on the original agreement.
Right.
It's the Plum Island.
I read it here somewhere.
Something doesn't, just, I don't know.
It's something that Tracy and, Tracy's been working on for quite a while.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, this is really kind of an agreement with the City of Newbury Port, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I...
We're saying that we've got this undeveloped lot, we're gonna say we won't ever ask for a water and sewer, because we are asking for the other lot, the Temple.
And it's because of the finite number?
Yeah.
All right.
So, in that context, it makes sense to me.
Yep, just had to grind it out a little bit in my head.
All right, am I in motion? Were you seconded?
I made a motion.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is, okay, we were notified today that someone, I assume it was no one that works for the town, because no one for the town was directed to do it, anyway. They installed a tree, a swing on a tree at the Upper Green, okay? It's certainly not a bad thing. However, the question came up, where does this town stand on it as far as liability, what happens if someone gets hurt, and all that? Okay, so, it's kind of up for discussion on whether people should be putting swings on the trees on the upper...
Maybe we get a zip line from tree to tree.
Well, we do, we should, you know? If we could make money.
Yeah.
There's no revenue here, and I, I don't know, what are people's thoughts on it?
My immediate concern is they didn't ask for permission. We made people ask for permission to use the green for some event for just six hours. Here's someone who's done something semi-permanent, so at the very least...
I think, I think it was a good observation, that someone came in and said, hey, what about that? And, do we have any idea who installed it?
Yes, Mr. Abloh.
Mr. Abloh did, okay.
Just ask him to take it down.
What? I, I think that, we send the letter, ask him to take it down, and then, if he'd like to do it, go through the process.
I mean, do we know for sure before we ask him to take it down? I mean, or is it just for sure, for sure?
Yeah, we can break the letter, this, it's our understanding or whatever.
Why would he do that?
It seemed like a good idea at the time.
Yeah.
I guess.
Well, we got so hung up planting one tree over there.
I know, exactly.
Plus, it's a time, if everybody goes to do that, or do it at their will...
That's right.
We've got no control over that.
Anarchy.
Yeah.
Starts out with swings.
This town has never seen anarchy before.
All right, so...
You know, if he put it up, if he put it up for the day for his kid, and then took it down when they left, probably wouldn't be so bad.
Yeah, all right, so, we'll have Kathy craft a letter, and I would like the board to sign it, okay? And we'll go in and sign it. And Kathy, just craft a letter saying, it's come to our attention that, you know, you installed a spring.
Like I said, formally, we should make a motion...
I just worry a little bit that we know it's Keith Abloh for sure.
We do.
Okay.
Well, we can write the letter in a way that, if we've got it wrong, you can...
If you put this up, please take it down.
Yeah.
Then I'm good with that.
So, Kathy, write up a letter, and we'll look at it.
Is it near the wetlands?
What, send it over to ConCon?
Yeah.
How high is it? How high is it? We do the Aeronautical Commission, you know?
Board of Health.
Could be Board of Health, yeah.
All right, so...
Okay, so, let's, formally, I'll make a motion that we ask, that we will send a letter to our only suspect.
Request that he take it down.
Request that he take it down.
And then, when he questions it...
And if he's interested in coming before us for permission to do it long term, then do so.
Motion been made?
What a process that will be if he ever comes before us for that. Hold on to your hats.
Everyone will leave here with feeling guilty.
Second motion.
All right.
Okay. We just second.
Have we got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful.
Joe, I wanna compliment you for running a very low-key meeting tonight.
All right, we talked about board and committee liaisons, and there's a lot of these things that we used to have liaisons that we don't need to anymore. I don't believe, and that's why I wanna discuss, we used to have a liaison for all the different departments. Those departments report to the town administrator now, and my feeling is, we should keep that chain of command, and if someone's got a message for the Highway Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, it go through the, actually, Police, Fire Department is different, but it go through the town administrator and down the thing, because people only should have one boss. And we can look at the committees, there was, like, a Conservation Commission, we historically have not had a liaison to them. If someone would like to be, speak up, and, but...
For the who?
I know the fact that, with ConCon, I know the fact that Dyke has office hours in here, I think every selectman goes in on their own if they've got any questions and talks to them about it, you know? The Historic Commission, I think that it'd be real nice to have a liaison to them. They're trying to get going and trying to get headed in a direction, and maybe there's someone from this board that could...
I had been serving that role, and I'm just finding it a little hard to make many of their meetings, because of the, the timing, sort of...
It's tough, but don't you think that would be a good one?
Yeah, I think for those kinds of boards especially, and it's, it's the same thing, like, the Media Committee is a little more straightforward, because I'm actually on the committee.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, it's, because, as you say, you know, with the departments, which are really within Town Hall, it's already, we've got a good administrative structure that seems to be functioning pretty well.
Yeah.
But it's, we've got these other boards that are kind of semi-independent, but we appoint them.
Yeah, like, the Library, the Board of, the Board of Health, the Rec. Committee, yep, exactly. Um, why don't we...
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah.
I don't know if we should do that. I think the selectmen should stay involved and, and have a liaison on these different, I just think there should be some contact between the selectmen and the most important one, because of statute, I don't think that the town administrator should be the liaison for the Fire Department.
I know, I said that.
Because they come under the selectmen.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we should keep our hand in, in a relationship with our different boards, I really do. I, I, I just, it's always good to have, even with, with the, with the ConCon, probably should be a selectman, like, with the planning board. We've done it extensively, we can attend the meetings, we definitely, with the school committee.
We can get people to go to the school committee meetings.
We go.
And that's fifty-four percent of our budget.
I made it for a while.
Yeah.
For a while. And David hit the nail on the head, you've only got so much time.
Yeah.
Maybe we could split it up.
But, I mean, following up, though, I mean, you can be a liaison without going to every single meeting.
Yeah.
And I think it's important, at the very least, that these boards and committees know that if there's some issue that they need to deal with, that they've got a selectman that they can use as kind of the contact person, someone who's following, you know, because you can follow what they're doing through the minutes and stuff, you don't have to go to anybody.
You know, I, I'm, I'm not singling out any board, but sometimes, going to the board meetings with the agendas set, you know, your participation or ability to change or affect, you know, you would do as well reading the minutes. I mean, so, I'm not so sure that it's the most effective way to, to be spending your time either, is going to every, like, say, you know, planning board meeting, so, because, you know, you really can't answer for all the selectmen.
Well, I think, I think maybe what we should do is look at the meetings that are coming up, okay, with, they're posted on our boards here, look at them at a meeting, and then, these are coming up, and I think that's a great idea, why don't we, now, when they have their meetings, Kathy, just how things work, when they send their minutes for the meeting in, who do they go to?
Agenda.
They go to Leslie? All right, why don't we ask them to CC the Board of Selectmen a copy of their meeting minutes? And then, that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, I found, I used to go to the planning board meetings a lot, because it was my old board and I enjoyed them, but, you know, I found myself very easily speaking for you guys, you know, and it's, kinda gets, you know...
Yeah, I mean, that's the trick, is that, that liaison person should be a channel of communication and not someone who is telling a board what to do.
And how well would you do going back to your old planning board?
I don't know.
You know? You'd be sucked in real quick.
Well, I think planning board is a little different, because we have Martha and often a...
No, it's a big, it's a big...
Yeah, but it is helpful, because you have the knowledge of that board.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thing. And the other one, we really need input is with the Finance Committee, because we've always had input on different budgets and stuff, you know?
But, like I say, I'm gonna go on record one more time, if there is a liaison for these and they attend all the meetings, I, I find it very, I mean, like, if you go to, let's say, the Finance Committee and start to facilitate the momentum of a meeting, that gets hairy, because it's not the five of us.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, if you start to change the outcomes, you know?
Every time I've gone, they've wanted us, they've always asked...
I know that.
They want the president. I've never gone to a meeting, I haven't even gone to the town administrator's meetings, you know, you're sitting, listen, a lot of times, they'll ask us questions, but at least you know where they're going and where they're coming from.
Yep.
So, we have some knowledge of what's going on.
Yeah. I definitely agree with Chuck, because, I mean, you know, we're a five-person board, no one of us has any more legal authority than anyone else on the board, and yet, somehow, we do need that line of communication, but I don't think it requires going to every single meeting either, that it would be good once in a while to go to a meeting and just be formally on the agenda, you know, sort of, selectmen's issues or something like that.
We have to practice prefacing our statements with, I'm not speaking for the board.
Yeah.
Then you're good, I mean, that's it, you know?
The opinions you're about to hear are only my own.
Yeah, that's right, so, but anyway, all right, so, we'll, again, this is anything that's really hot in the thing, but if people are interested in any committees or have any ideas about specific ones, and, and I'm talking about the Historic Commission, because they are a new, they're all new there, okay? And there's was some conceptions on what they should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing. A lot of them would rather be part of a, my opinion, again, I prefer, in my opinion, a lot of them would rather be, like, on a historic society, historical society, okay? But being on a town board, they don't have the freedom to go and fly and do that type of thing, you know? So, you're smiling, so, anyway.
Well, yeah, I, I know the cast of characters, I've been to a couple of their meetings, I, I understand what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, the, the historic commission, right? And David can answer this, and Martha can answer this, but doesn't that, on some levels, interface with our historic preservation, you know, the, the, the facilitating of our historic, um, preservations?
I mean, their role in mass general law.
Yeah.
Right, so, it's, it's no joke when you, when you're messing with the historic commission, they, they have a role.
Oh.
And it can be, and it can be, and it can be, it can be, like, very specific.
Well, I think one of the difficulties in Newbury is that we don't have any, you know, local historic districts, because if you have a local historic district, then typically, it's your historical commission that administers the bylaws that are associated with that district. Where, in our case, really, other than looking after the schoolhouse, I mean, in the past, they were involved in preserving town records and we had a budget for doing such stuff, but.
This is one of the first years that we've actually given them some money in the budget.
Yeah.
So, you're right.
I mean, just off the top, what are some of the things that the historic commission would do? You know, mass general law, if they were participating, would they be the, say it for me so I can, without putting you, without putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole paragraph in mass general law, the first thing is protecting, you know, preserving, protecting the town's historic assets, but holding preservation restrictions for the on.
And meaning, the planning board would set up the ability for them to administer it?
Yes, they would, they would proceed it.
Because I can remember that process when we, when I was on the planning board, especially involved in actually, you know, the farm. So, I mean, it might be nice if, um, I mean,
Yeah, they can also.
Martha, do you, do you mind helping them if they need help?
I don't, I'd be too.
Yeah, and I, I.
So, that might be kind of me.
We already agreed to this, like, about a year ago, and I told them, but I think part of the difficulty is that, you know, sometimes, they would propose bylaws, and in fact, they were starting to work on a demolition delay bylaw.
They are still working on it.
Yeah, and it just, apparently, did not get their act together in time for annual town meeting, but that's an example of something that they can do. The other thing is that, I forgot the official term, but it's essentially like a, a survey of historic buildings. And a few iterations back of the historic commission, an effort was started. And one of the reasons for doing this is that it helps you become eligible or more eligible for grants and stuff like that. So, there's some things that, you know, and then you'd like an inventory like that if you are gonna pass a demolition delay bylaw, because you want to know which are the properties.
Inventory, that's the word, yeah.
Yeah, an inventory, and the idea is, you know, the demolition delay bylaw, it's like, here's the ones that would be potentially eligible under the bylaw, but then usually the bylaws are written that, then you go and look at them individually to see if they really have enough historic merit that you would want to actually put in the demolition delays, there's some stuff like that, that.
If you purchase a historic home in this town, and you, you wanted to make certain repairs and things, I, I believe there's money available on grants, now would this historic commission have any feedback in helping you get those grants, or?
Um, I don't, I mean, I think that it has to be enlisted, um, just in that.
Yeah, yeah.
They've enlisted in the historic.
Yeah. Well, I mean, kind of what my think, what, what my thinking is, is, Channing's, Channing's the chair of the historical commission now, right?
Yes.
And I get to talk to Channing, and I think if, I know you're busy, but I think you and Channing, you know, where you will have the ability to be working on certain things together, you know, along, and I'm sure he knows it, but it would really be nice if he, maybe send him a note or do something. If he knows he can really work with you, I think that'll take and move things forward, because, you know, he's a busy guy. He's trying to work and make a living, and, you know, I think they're trying to, you know, develop a little larger historic commission people-wise, and it might be nice to, you know, Martha, for you, you know, and I know you don't mind working with anyone, so.
No, I mean, we've, we've chatted about various things, and I should encourage them if there are things, like, if you're wanting to give the demolition delay bylaw or whatever, so.
That would be, that's a big help, that would be a big help. When I see Channing, can I have your permission to tell him that, or, you know, that'll be great.
I mean, I hope he knows it all right.
Yep, good, that'd be great.
I've certainly told the, the commission.
Good.
I've met with the commission, I guess, twice, the, the current membership, you know, and, again, just try to be encouraging.
Yeah, we'll give them our support, I mean, that's one thing we can do.
Especially to the bylaw stuff. None of them have ever had any experience, as far as I know, with that kind of thing, and it's.
You know, that, that's, it's a brand-new thing, there's no history there that they can bring forward.
Yeah.
And it, it, they could be very valuable.
Bylaw, meaning demolition bylaw?
Like Mike said, okay, if I identify, if first, there's an inventor of the historic buildings and properties, and then, you can move forward once you've got that.
Right.
Without it's tough.
Yeah, there was a good start on it, but just, no one picked it up, you know?
That might be something that both the board, the planning board and the historic commission could do together, you know?
I think they've been working on it as a, as you're trying to get the demolition delay bylaw.
No, we were thinking of the, the inventory.
The inventory of buildings.
Yeah.
You know, because there's a lot of interest there, too.
Alright. Uh, Dave, documentation for the formatting?
Yeah.
That you sent that through?
Yeah, did you take a look at it?
Yeah, I did.
I thought the, I mean, we can add to the list of don'ts or whatever if you want, but, uh, did you think that the list, and that was the key thing?
I think, I think it's a good start, and, like I say, philosophically, I really, you know, I've got, I, I'm thinking both sides of it, that it should be government activities only, or you mentioned, um, public access for things, and it's hard to draw, it's, you know, you're either black and white, and then, once you go gray, like you said, a bigger list of don'ts, so how do we do it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the, the good news is, as I mentioned at the last meeting, is that there are a lot of communities around the Commonwealth that have had quite a bit of experience with these things, and so, basically, what the media committee is doing, you know, is just leveraging off this stuff. So, just like, when it comes to being on a planning board, you often have model bylaws to, to start with. We have the same thing in this whole, you know, government public access, you know, the so-called PEG, as they call it, uh, field. And so, what we're doing is really starting with the, the model documents that the statewide organization has put together, and then, you know, necessarily, just like we do with a zoning bylaw, tweak it to better fit our particular community.
Yeah.
We've found just the resources that we've gotten through the membership of this group have been really fabulous in helping us, our committee getting up to speed.
Jeff had a question on what's, we're talking surrounding communities, like, well, Rowley and Salisbury do, because we're kind of connected, we'll be connected on the education channel with a lot of stuff they do.
Throw on West Newbury, what are they doing? Do we know?
I don't know at this point in time what West Newbury is doing, I mean, what we've been actually doing, you know, especially with Caleb, but also, you know, one of our other, uh, committee members has worked in this area and some of the other communities. So, we're really looking, really, Ipswich to Salisbury, you know, on the north-south side, and, you know, some interaction with Georgetown, it's just sort of a question of one by one, sort of establishing a relationship with the leader, the leadership of each of these different community groups, and, and short-term, what we're really looking for is, is content that we can put up. You know, we, we know that various interesting people who have looked at Plum Island, like Mike Morris, for example, or Bill Sargent on, and Ipswich have done pieces for other communities. And so, to get started, you know, we're thinking, okay, let's see if we can, you know, we'll get copies of those videos so we can add them, because they're gonna certainly be of interest, you know, and we thought, Plum Island, right now, being a rather hot topic, it's a good way to sort of get started on this, and then, you know, as time goes on, you know, we'll start trying to develop our own local, and, Caleb has some experience doing this kind of stuff, as you said, that.
It's, it's funny, because when I was looking at your thing, and, um, it's, it's harder to think of all the no's. Okay, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know, you're never gonna think of them all the first time, we'll have to, there's gonna be a working document, but working about the no's, it's hard to think of all the no's, you know? And if you say the yeses, you're gonna leave some of them out that you want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, we're almost, we're almost done, have at it. The minutes of the, uh, June eleventh meeting, that's what you sent out, Kathy? Okay, all in favor? Approved?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
I'm motion to approve.
Or second, whatever.
Seconds?
Second.
Okay, deletions, additions, corrections?
Not good to me.
No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reminder of household hazards waste day, at Newbury Elementary School back parking lot, Saturday, June twenty-ninth, nine AM to twelve noon. And, um, we gotta make sure, it's kind of late, but to get it on the website or something like that, we need to get that out. Yeah, okay.
They had a, they had a thing in the tax bill, too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, too, yeah.
Because you know what, I want to bring something up about that, which is really good, and it was really good to guess. I think possibly, I haven't talked to Mike Riley at all, I think he should include certain things periodically in the tax bills on, um, things that are going on, especially crimes against seniors and things like that. There's all kinds of different scams going on out there, and that was really bad.
Yeah.
A lot of telephone stuff, and the people, they seem to, they get their tax bill and they, and they seem to pay attention to us in that envelope. And, uh, if they see something like this that he wants to put out, at least they'll read it.
Yep.
They'll become a little bit more aware of it, or somehow, other ways it seems to go by the wayside, but I think this is a good way, because this goes to every.
It's a really good point, taxes always get people's attention, right?
Well, the, the other thing, it, it may be periodically, we have a thing on the cable TV, the chief's counter or something like that.
Yeah.
And that'd be very valuable to people.
Yeah, we've been trying to encourage, you know, all our boards and committees, but I think that might be one where, you know, I think he might be actually very, very interested in doing that, and it'd be.
I'm gonna add a couple more things right in, in here, okay, because it's something that, before Jen leaves, you've gotta go. Carol Baum, on the trash tower, she's been working with the people at Triton, and she's got permission from the administration at Triton to do a project over at Newbury Elementary School.
Good.
So, that's good. The other thing is, uh, that the people need to know that within the next week or two, the exact date hasn't been set, that the assessors, the board of assessors are gonna send people around to assess people's houses and property. They'll have badges and be identified, but we could, the more people that we can get the word out to, the better, so they're not calling the police when someone knocks on the door, okay? Alright, have we had any communications with anyone?
Police appointments.
Yeah, back, back there.
Oh, it's the very back one?
Yep.
Okay, letter from Mike Riley, Chief of Police, requested police department appointments. To the Honorable Board of Selectmen, I respectfully request your approval for the appointments of the following persons, effective July first, two thousand fourteen. Full-time, full-time police officers, Stephen Smith and John Lucy III. Officer Smith has been a full-time police officer with Newbury Police Department, but was laid off March seventeen, two thousand twelve, as part of the personnel reductions caused by budget cuts. With the passing of the two thousand fourteen budget, funding for this position has been restored. As such, the Newbury Police Department would respectfully request that Officer Smith be rehired. John Lucy III, Officer John Lucy, Officer Lucy III has been a reserve officer with the Newbury Police Department since two thousand ten. He served as the school resource officer for the past year and a half. Officer Lucy has both the work ethic and experience necessary to take the next step from reserve patrolman to full-time patrolman. Funding for this position is available in two thousand fourteen budget. Both of these appointments are fully funded in the two thousand fourteen budget. Required personnel action forms for these appointments have been submitted to the personnel board.
I'm making motion, wait, wait.
Second. Alright, any questions? I'd just like to make a statement that it's really good to be on the, on this side, bringing Stephen Smith back, because it's tens of thousands of dollars to bring someone new in and get them trained and up to, and it's a huge cost savings, and we're glad, we're lucky to have him back. And I've had some conversation with people out of Triton, and John's doing a great job out there.
Yep, I saw that, too.
Okay, motion been made, seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Done. Alright, that's it, I guess.
I just have a bunch of stuff for signatures.
Okay.
One warrant from Tracy.
Yeah, we can sign them, we can go out of session for that, right? Yeah, okay, motion?
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Off air.